If we could have a roll call, please.
[inaudible]
[inaudible]
Here.
House.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
So.
Here.
White.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
City College Trustee Bloom.
Here.
Croninger.
Here.
Jerkowitz.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Macker.
Here.
Rigel.
Here.
Del Yegus.
Here.
President Hasland.
Here.
Thank you. Will you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now will call for public comment, and these are for items not on today's agenda. I have one speaker slip here for Jeff Bard. If there are any others, if you could please hand them up to Nina up here in the front. I don't have a clock, but I'm gonna, you know.
You know, I got two minutes.
You got it in your head, yeah.
I would like to congratulate the new members of the Board of Trustees, and in particular, I'd like to commend Marty Bloom, who has always been very, very accessible. I had the pleasure of having dinner with her at the Bene Brith, and she very graciously gave me a ride right here for a very important meeting in this room. I'm here before you out of exasperation with a program that's under your jurisdiction that drastically needs oversight, and I would recommend oversight by Dr. Servin. The Computers in Our Future Program is a very important program. It is a bilingual program. I support bilingual education. I support CIOF. However, bilingual education is under attack nationwide. If we're going to have bilingual education, it needs to be the very best. Frankly, our goal should be that Computers in Our Future should be a model for best practices that can be promulgated nationwide. I don't have time to give you the long story, but you can certainly consult Bard versus Romero, which was a lawsuit about five years ago, which was amicably resolved. However, the needed reform of CIOF never occurred. I will restrict my remarks today to one, which is a violation of California statute. California Education Code requires that our colleges and universities equal or exceed the standard of free speech prevailing in the community. However, Computers in Our Future has undue restrictions, for instance, restrictions on MySpace.com, which does not exist at the library or any other facility. So leaving that one remark, this is registered week, and I've been running on such little sleep, you will please excuse me if I seem overly caffeinated. So I will close with that caveat, and I will report back in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only speaker slip, so I'll close public comment. First thing off, the purpose of the joint meeting, I want to welcome everyone and really welcome the City College Board of Trustees here. This is something the City Council and the Board of Trustees done, it's been several years now since our last joint meeting, and I don't even think Dr. Servin was president then, so we know it's been several years. And the purpose of it really is for us to get to know each other, to talk about areas of mutual interest, and perhaps forge a stronger relationship between the city and City College, and just find some ideas to do that. I want to thank the staff, particularly Jim Armstrong, our city administrator, and Nina Johnson, for putting together the details of the agenda and the various staff members who put together the written reports. But I really hope this is something that we could perhaps do, if we like what we see today, perhaps do it maybe on an annual basis and touch base on a number of things and get to know each other better and maybe forge some new projects together. So I welcome everyone and want to turn it over to President Hasland if you have any opening remarks.
I too want to welcome everyone, and I welcome the opportunity to meet with the City Council. I think we have two basic things in common between City College and the City Council. We are both stewards of the public interest. We represent the public. We try to do our best on the public's behalf. The second is, we're out of money. And I'm here to see if somebody in the audience doesn't have an idea about how we can manufacture more of that so that we can do our job. But I look forward to an exchange of views about how we can better cooperate, and I support Helene's point of trying to do this on an annual basis. I think that's a wonderful idea.
Thank you. We have in our agenda a number of items that were based on written reports. There was not a plan to do a full presentation on any of them, although if anyone would like to bring up any of those items, it's items five through 10. If they have a question, there's staff here who could answer them. But again, there are quite a few issues here, and see if there's anyone who has any questions on any of those written reports. Ms. Livingston.
I'd just like to thank the city for the sidewalks on Loma Alta. It's just one of the most magnificent projects that is our mutual benefit, and it's one of those things that if you build it, they will come. And just seeing so many people use that, and it's just such a welcoming access up to the Mesa from the downtown.
Great.
I really, really support public work.
Thank you. I'll just put in a plug, that was funded through CDBG funds through the Housing and Urban Development in Congress, and that slated for elimination by some proposals. So if you like CDBG funds, contact your federal representatives. But that was funded there. Anyone else have questions on any of the written presentations? Okay, so we'll move right on to item 11. I had asked to put this on the agenda. We have a great connection between City College and the city and our own Sister Cities program, one of our newest ones, Cotar Montenegro, and there was a recent exchange. So I'll just move it over to Mr. Lilly and Mr. Bublitz. Is that how you pronounce it?
Bublitz.
Bublitz. Who's the Chair of the Santa Barbara City College School of Culinary Arts and Hotel Management. Thank you.
Good afternoon. So George, Mr. Lilly and I represent with the Cotar Sister City program, and George was the first person with the delegation with Dingle that brought the Sister City program and Santa Barbara City College together. They had lunch in our gourmet dining room. There were several members of the delegation who were interested in food and culinary arts, and so they came to us. And through that, we forged a relationship with the Sister City group. We actually had one of our students that summer place as an internship in hotel in Dingle, and so they got that kind of cultural things. Several years later, when Cotar came up, the Sister City showed that there was a lot of cultural and economic ties between Santa Barbara and the city of Cotar and Montenegro. Tourist economy, physically, both communities are seaside nestled against mountains. Sports and theater arts are important parts of faculty, community life, and culinary arts and eating. UCSB has provided the sports link with their water polo team. The Granada Theater has a project going to provide the cultural link, and the City College program was tapped to provide the food and tourism link. Cotar right now is in the process of updating their tourism and restaurants scene after many years of being part of Yugoslavia and part of, I guess, the Eastern European Bloc. And now they're trying to increase the amount of Western tourists that come, and so part of the things with City College was to bring our knowledge over there. Through a pilot program, we sent ourselves and two students, I went over there to work with them on looking at their, and setting up a culinary arts program. And we sent two of our students, Troy Peters, who is one of our current students and a new student, and we spent three weeks teaching and cooking in Cotar, starting in July. And we taught at an institute that specialized in disabled students, specifically with deaf and hearing disorders, which provided a bit of a challenge for me because I don't speak Serbian, nor do I sign, and the interpreter they brought us didn't speak English. But he did speak Italian, so we kind of worked it all out.
But you all like to eat, so that was good.
Yeah. Luckily, though, you know, food is a very physical and visible type of medium, so they quickly picked up which end of the knife to hold, how to cut onions, chickens, and everything else. We ended up, for the three weeks, providing lunch for the staff over the summer there. And so the students learned a lot about American cooking techniques, French cooking techniques. I learned about Montenegro and cooking techniques. And our students got to experience a foreign country, plus a very exotic country. This had a lot of impact on the career goals of our students, especially Troy, who not only wants to become a chef and is working in several restaurants locally, but eventually become a teacher. And so this was a chance for him to actually use his knowledge to teach over there. So that was a good part. The school is still continuing our connection with them. We're now working on a program to continue this this summer, either with just indirect support or actually sending students again. And we're also working on a program of bringing some of their students here to spend a semester in America, you know, going to our school, taking our classes, and going back and then becoming chefs over there. Luckily, we were able to do this through funding through both City College and the Sister City program, and now we are just working on securing additional funding since some of those sources, I guess, because of the budget, as we've alluded to, is not very conducive to these kind of events. So George has some visual aids.
Right. Your turn. Yes. With the presentation and. I thought I would first, I have a cold, and I won't apologize for my voice because I think it sounds better. I wanted to put a kind of a personal touch on what Randy did. We started the program three years ago. It basically took eight to 12 young people from the Institute of Children with Disabilities in Cotar, Montenegro, and it took those children who normally, when they get to be 18, they leave the institute without the skills that one needs to find employment, particularly in a country that's just lost its communist ties, and frankly, unemployment for young people is very high. So the concept, the idea, was to just teach some disadvantaged young people who had enthusiasm but an interest in the culinary side, the basic skills so that they get entry-level positions into the food and restaurant business, and that was the concept of it. Two years ago, Gordon Millick, one of our members, a chef from Los Angeles, went over, started the program, taught the course. This past year, we had our second year, and we were just absolutely blessed to have someone of Randy's stature to go over and teach the course. And of course, we will run it again this year. To put a personal face on it, in our first year, we had several students, but three who turned out to be outstanding, and this is Randy with the three young students from Cotar. Two of them don't speak, or excuse me, they don't hear, they speak somewhat, but they're disadvantaged in that way. These three students performed so well and had the opportunity during the period that they were in the course to intern at the Splendide Hotel in Montenegro, which is a, you know, four-star hotel, and so they got some experience. They went from there to Piedmont, and they interned for three weeks at one of the better resorts in the Piedmont area, which was just a gift. And then we brought them over here last summer for four weeks to intern at Davino's Restaurant in Santa Barbara, and three nicer young people you couldn't meet. And we had a fundraising dinner last year, which our mayor attended, and it was a joy because Goran obviously did the cooking, but the three young people were the chefs, along with the two people, Melinda and Troy, who came to us basically through Randy, through the foster care program, looking for young people with an interest in the culinary arts and an interest in this kind of a program. So they helped prepare the dinner, then they proceeded to go to Montenegro to participate in this year's cooking course. These three people were there as well, and then we added several people from not just Cotar and two from the United States, but one young lady from Serbia. That's the young lady down at the bottom here. So all very deserving young people. All in all, we feel it's a great success. We're not looking to change the world, but we are kind of looking to change it, maybe one or two people at a time. If you met any of these young people, you'd be thrilled at who they are, what they've accomplished, and we will keep tabs on where we go from here. We'll be back again at it this year, and we'll run our third year of the program, and we hope to expand it from there. One other thing I would mention, I think it's on the agenda or on the portfolio, this year, aside from the culinary program, we will be sending 12 young performers over to perform at the International Cotar Festival, which is in its, I think, 17th or 18th year. It takes talent from all over Europe, and it's quite an honor to be invited. We have the support of the Granada Theater, Laura Inks. Clay Bodine is creating an original program for the event. It's six months into preparation. This will take place in July. If you'd like a taste of it, Clay has put together a group of young performers, some of who will be going over and some who are just doing the exhibition on March 13. And they'll be putting on a musical performance at the Granada Theater. There'll be a performance at 2:00 and 7:00 o'clock, and if you want to see some bright young talent from this area at the beginning stages, some of them going over to Montenegro for this international exchange, I think you'll enjoy it very much. I know you can't really see the photos, but I have all your names, so I will make sure that you get a copy of this either on the email or through the mail. And again, I'd like to thank Randy for what he's done, but also just give you a feeling for the personalization start of it when you start to meet these young people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for, what a great program. Any questions or comments from anyone?
Well, one of the, I think several of the Sister City programs have been initiated as a consequence of the City College Study Abroad program.
I think you know of another one, don't you?
I do, I do. And that is our Sister City in China, in the city of Wayhi. And this coming summer, we're going to be having somewhere between 20 and 30 students from their high schools come and learn about what we do. So I'll be sure to bring them by the gourmet dining room for taste treats.
Definitely. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I was just going to add that President Haslam mentioned the gourmet dining room, our recently remodeled gourmet dining room, so I would invite the council and all those residents to come and visit it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much. That was a great way to start the meeting. Item number 12, we have an update on the South Coast Gang Task Force and City College Programs for At-Risk Youth. We've put both of them together in one item, so we have Mr. Armstrong and Ms. Wright, who are going to take that over.
Yes, Madam Mayor, President Hasland, and members of the Board of Trustees and City Council, I want to give you just a brief update on the South Coast Gang Task Force. This is an effort that we've been pursuing aggressively for the last three years, and as you know, I think gang violence and violence with youth is one of those issues in our community. It's existed for a long time. It's one of the most difficult issues we deal with when we have young people in our community committing violence against each other for really crazy reasons. And in the past few years, we've had at least three homicides in our community, two of with involved 14, 15-year-olds, one recently, a totally innocent civilian just walking home from work. Just senseless violence. And we had some direction from the City Council back in early 2008, basically asking the city staff to get more engaged with all of the different parties in our community that who are involved in one way or another with this issue. And it started, we brought 48 community stakeholders together from throughout the community. So we're talking about the law enforcement community, so that would be the city police, the county sheriff, probation, the education community. We had folks from county schools, from the elementary school and high school districts, from City College. We had a number of nonprofits who are dealing in this area that are providing direct services to at-risk youth, all of them working on part of this problem. And we had about a three-hour meeting, and we talked about what can we do differently in this area? Because it appeared to us that we had lots of resources working in the area, but how could we do a better job? We came to the conclusion, a couple conclusions. One, that we needed better coordination between the various efforts because of funding in many cases and because of different missions. We had all of these silos of folks who were working, in many cases, with the exact same youth, but not knowing that they were working with the same youth. They were working on different strategies, and so part of it is, how do we get these folks to communicate better? And then the other thing is, is how do we institutionalize that approach? And also, we were, of course, approaching it as a city, but it needs to be a regional approach, because gang members don't know where city limit lines are and what's unincorporated, what's carpentry or Galita, the cross boundaries, and so to try and do it as a regional approach. And that was the conclusion we came to in that early meeting. After that, we had a series of meetings, March through 2008. We kept those community stakeholders together. We met like every two weeks. We, just on a shoestring, we put together a summer program that summer where we brought folks from county schools, from CADA, the Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse, from Community Action Commission, the high school folks, the probation folks. And we basically created a bunch of outreach workers who, in addition to their regular jobs, also agreed to take on, I think that first summer, we worked with about 150 youth, where we basically met with these, and these were kids who were identified as either gang members or potential gang members who needed assistance and help. And we worked with those kids, we tried to get them engaged in productive activities. And again, it was, we didn't have any money, we didn't have any money, we just brought all these folks that were very concerned about the issue. And I think one of the great byproducts of that is, is we had folks working together on this issue who had never worked together before, and linking folks together. And so that was our first success. And then we followed up with that with an action plan, a more short-term action plan, but also starting to look at a more institutionalized approach. After that, we created a leadership and executive council. Leadership council was elected officials and key folks from the law enforcement community and from large nonprofits. We also had executive folks, myself, the superintendent of schools, the county exec, the city managers of Galita and Carpinteria. We also brought some of the key nonprofits together to try and work on a regular basis. And we also, we appointed a person on city staff to try and work on this on a basically halftime basis. Then we applied for a grant, and we were able to secure $400,000 from the state to then employ caseworkers that are, again, working under the direction of county schools, but we had some folks from Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse, again, the high school district, and also with Community Action Commission to try and institutionalize that effort. And that's been going on since almost two years now. After that, we said, how do we keep going? And so we created a more long-term action plan that we endorsed, and I'll just briefly go through what our, kind of our key objectives are. First, our goal was to focus on a target population, that this was really more of an intervention program. If we tried to make it too big, and we felt we needed to deal with the immediate problem, which is let's intervene with those kids who are in gangs or potential gang members. And it's a relatively small population, it's probably somewhere around 700 on the South Coast. We need to look at it comprehensively. We can't just deal with the kids, but we have to engage their families and their support group. We need to, as I said before, advocate for coordination and partnerships. The key was not necessarily a lot more resources at the problem, but getting these folks to talk and communicate better. We need to look at a reliable funding source, and that's been one of the real challenges in through this effort, because in the middle of this, of course, we got hit with the recession and the loss of funding for all of us, but we really felt we needed to try and institutionalize this. We need to be experimental, to take some risks, and recognize that when you're dealing with this population, you're not going to solve the problem, you're going to try and make improvements, and you're going to have things that go wrong, and we need to be patient. In the last year, we continued to go forward with that, and we started looking with all of the public agencies and the nonprofit community, try and get some secure funding. And despite the economy, we were successful in getting the county to contribute, Carpinteria, Galita to contribute, our city put money in, we also got nonprofit funding, and we were able to bring on a full-time coordinator. And we decided that this is not a city program, that it needed to be more of a regional approach, and so rather than have the city run the program, we were fortunate in getting the Community Action Commission to be the host agency on that, because we felt that the Community Action Commission has that regional approach, and we also felt that this is a program that could be duplicated in North County, because they've got the same issues, in fact, worse issues in North County than we're dealing with here. So we entered into a memorandum of understanding with CIC. Altogether, we were able to generate about $190,000 in funding, and we were able to recruit a task force coordinator. And I do want to introduce, and one of the reasons we put this on the agenda was that the task force coordinator, we were able to hire Dr. Gus Freas, right here, and Gus comes to us from Los Angeles County School System, or it says county schools. He has a PhD. He grew up in East LA, went to Garfield High School. And any of you know about Los Angeles, you know Garfield High School is right in the center of the major gang activities, so he comes from that population. He pulled himself up by the bootstraps, but he's got personal experience in dealing with gang members. But he also has the educational background, and he's worked with LA County sheriffs, he's worked with the county board of supervisors. He's recognized statewide and nationally of dealing in this issue to begin coordinating the many activities that are going on in this area. And we're real happy to have Gus here. Gus has been here, what, three months now, Gus? And we're expecting some positive things from Gus. Onward, we did apply for some more funding, and because of our successful track record, we were able to get a second CalGrip grant that starts this month to continue the process of having these gang outreach workers working with these folks. And again, that's going to be coordinated by Fred Rosso at County Schools, and it'll involve folks like probation, county sheriff. We've got some nonprofits who are partnerships with us, people who provide direct services to these kids. So we're continuing to make progress, and in fact, we're now actually applying for another grant of $750,000. In fact, Gus is working on it because it's due in, what, eight days?
Yeah, next week.
And part of what we want to do is, a lot of what we've done so far has been, we put a program together, but we need to start creating some metrics. How will we know we're successful? What's working, what's not working? And so a big part of this grant is to now look at our efforts and try and create some measurements so we can determine how successful we're doing, what's working, what's not working. We still have a long ways to go, but I think we've made a lot of progress. To me, I think what is really exciting is just to see the folks that, when we brought them together three years ago, were strangers to each other, weren't comparing data, weren't sharing the kinds of data they had. Now, coming into a room, they all know each other, they're working together, they're sharing data, in many cases, basic data, like the probation folks are now talking to the school folks about who's on probation, and the school folks are saying, here's the transcripts of these kids, and you can see how they're doing or how they're not doing, or how poorly they're doing, and then saying, how do we work with these kids to get them to be successful? How do we find them a job, if that's what they need? How do we intervene if their parents have drug or alcohol problems? We've got a long ways to go, but we've made a lot of progress. So that's kind of where we are from here, and I thought it's helpful for you to see the progress we've made so far. And I didn't ask Dr. Freas to say anything, but he's available if anybody else has questions to Dr. Freas, as well as myself.
I know you didn't ask, but I don't know if Dr. Freas, if you'd like to say hello anyway, introduce yourself, come on up.
Yes. Very briefly, thank you for the opportunity to address me this afternoon. Community colleges, community colleges are becoming more important in our communities, given all the tremendous limitations of resources that are out there. More and more, we need to build on our strengths, and I got to tell you, you've got some great strengths. I met Noel and Marsha Wright and the program that they have there to address the needs of high-risk kids, and I definitely plan on communicating with them, working with them, collaborating with them, and finding better ways to connect our kids, our high-risk kids in our communities, with that type of exemplary work. So as we move forward, again, we do have strengths, and we look forward to mapping them and maximizing our multi-agency collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wright, did you want, and Ma'am, we have your presentation, then we'll open it up. Great. Thank you.
Thank you for having me today. It's always a privilege to speak about the EOPS program at Santa Barbara City College. It stands for Extended Opportunities Programs and Services, and the different programs we provide for this community. Through the EOPS program, which is a state-funded program, we receive state funding in addition to community funding through private donations to serve low-income, educationally disadvantaged students. Our support services include academic counseling, tutoring support, computer access, personal and academic advising, referrals to appropriate local community agencies, book grants, emergency grants, peer mentoring, and cultural activities. The EOPS program offers three summer bridge programs to specifically address the needs of our community by providing a comprehensive summer readiness program to include a college-level, transferable, college-success course, tutoring, peer mentoring, financial support with book grants and student stipends. grants and student stipends, and educational field trips. Because of the drastic cuts in the state budget to the community college system, and specifically to EOPS, which received a 40% cut in our funding in the last two years, the summer bridge programs are now dependent on private funding support from the community. Let me describe the summer bridge programs to you. Running Start serves 65 local high school seniors, to include youth from La Cuesta and El Puente. These are students that never had any interest to come to college. We go out and recruit the students. We provide them with a six-week summer program, and after that program, they are well-prepared to continue their college education and are excited about doing so. The program has a 92% retention rate from summer to fall. Spark is our program for our single-parent students. We serve 30 local, single-parent youth wanting to pursue a college education. These students are primarily teen, single parents, and single parents living in local family shelters or transitional housing. In addition to the academic program, Spark includes childcare services for these students. The students that successfully complete the program continue on in the fall and receive support services to include childcare from the EOPS program. The retention rate for Spark is 84%. Our newest summer bridge program, Transitions, provides access to higher education for local individuals recently released from jail or prison, or individuals on probation or parole. Recruitment includes Los Prietos Boys Camp and working with both probation and parole officers, as well as the continuation high schools. 85% of the participants last year completed the program, and all of those students continued in fall. This is an increase of 5% from the program in 2009. A number of local gang youth participate annually in our EOPS summer bridge programs. Participants in the above summer bridge programs continue to receive the academic and support services they need to be successful in college through the EOPS program throughout the course of the school year. More important than the programs and the statistics that we have are the individual success stories. Manny didn't pass the eighth grade. He is known to local law enforcement as a member of the Westside Gang. Ten years ago, Manny enrolled at Santa Barbara City College with the hopes of staying out of prison. Not only has he done that, today is a Manny, today Manny is a college graduate, graduated from Santa Barbara City College, UCSB, and last year earned his master's degree in philosophy from San Francisco State University. Manny aspires to return to Santa Barbara City College in the fall to become Professor In EOPS, Manny met rival gang member JJ. They became best friends. JJ is now a college graduate with a bachelor's degree from Northridge and a successful local business owner. Robert is known in the community as a Carpa. I know Robert as an engineering student with an A average, aspiring to transfer to UCLA, USC, or Cal. I won't tell you my preference. These young men are just three of many examples of local youth given the opportunity to pursue an education and are excelling. They've turned their lives around. The opportunity Santa Barbara City College provides is to introduce our local youth to another choice aside from hanging out in the streets. The EOPS program at Santa Barbara City College welcomes the opportunity to continue to provide the services and support needed, so our youth may not only experience a college education, but experience personal success and the opportunity to become law-abiding, productive citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for, yes, myself?
Yes, am I on? I had made the suggestion once that the students are required to do community service time, and that maybe a program could be set up at the school for these students to mentor foster children, to show them that there is another way, because these kids have had a tough time. And I think it would benefit both parties involved, and that would be pretty much a free program.
We also do have a foster youth program at the college, but that's a great suggestion. Dr. Freas and I have spoken about a mentorship program where Santa Barbara City College students are perhaps mentored, and particularly these students within the EOPS are mentored by businessmen and women out in the community. And in turn, our students mentor the youth that Dr. Freas will work with and through the CalGrip programs. So that's something that we have talked about. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Okay, now to the grimmer side of things. We have about the financial condition of Santa Barbara City College, Dr. Servan, and then we'll follow that with the financial condition of the city.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First of all, I too would like to thank Mayor Helen Schneider. She and I have talked about this meeting even before she became a mayor. And actually, the first conversation was with former Mayor Blam, and now it's happening. And I also want to acknowledge Jim Anstrom, it's a real pleasure working with him and his staff, and we have a very good collaboration. In terms of dollars, I figure that I better find the big dollar sign to make up for the lack of money that is coming in. And this presentation is meant to be a very high-level, brief overview. Obviously, the details are intricate and many. The reason for the importance of the common understanding of the funding is because there are going to be implications for our work together with the city in various areas of training, and even in the joint use agreements. Now, there will be fees on both sides that weren't there before. So certainly, we are moving in a direction where, I guess somebody said earlier today, the culture of freebies may need to change. Just as a quick factoid, Santa Barbara College this past fall served almost 20,000 credit students and over 12,000 continuing education students. And we have a budget of over $100 million, of which 85% is unrestricted general fund. We are also important to this community, not only because of the tremendous education resource that we are, but also because we are the sixth-largest employer in the county, and our employees depend on us for their well-being. And then we have a very significant economic impact. And we will have actually an updated economic impact study that is being completed, and hopefully this will be another opportunity for the discussion with the city. Our funding sources are limited. Federal funding, it's only about 2% of our overall funding. State funding, meaning state reimbursement for enrollments, is about 55% of our funding. And contrary to popular folklore, many people think that the more enrollments, the more money. It's actually not at all true. Every community college in the state has a limit of enrollments for which we are funded. And that's established through a fairly elaborate formula. There are 112 community colleges in the state, and we each get our cap from the state. Anything above that is not funded. Local funding comes from a variety of sources, property taxes, lottery, tuition fees for our international out-of-state students, parking fees, health fees, transportation fees. We rent campus facilities. The interest is diminishing, but we still get some interest. We are very good with writing grants, and our staff is extraordinarily diligent and innovative in funding grants, and there are other miscellaneous resources. Foundation for SBCC is a key partner of the college. Foundation average, they raise about $5 million a year to support scholarships, book grants, childcare stipends, and various other programs for which state funding is not available. Another key difference between us and our partners in the community is that the fees for our credit California residents are not set by SBCC, they are set by the legislature through a vote. Therefore, as opposed to other educational entities, we really have no control over the incoming revenue from the state. We have been truly effective, and I am very proud on behalf of all of us at Santa Barbara City College about the tremendous success in ensuring that, in spite of the difficulties over the last several years, our fiscal management has been truly remarkable. And as a public institution, we are very proud of our ability to maintain core instruction and programs, and to maintain the employment of all of our regular employees, no layoffs, no furloughs, in an environment that has been very difficult for many. We believe that we will continue to be successful. We have the know-how, the will, and the determination to have in Santa Barbara City College a very strong institution into the future. Just a quick overview for the last two years. Like the city, we have done the same type of actions. Basically, we have reduced expenditures in all operational areas, trying to gain efficiencies, consolidate positions where possible, very few, and to keep the reductions as far away from the classroom as possible. However, some course reductions were necessary. We also have increased revenues. We are functioning right now with the record number of grants at the college. And we are also trying to increase opportunities for rental of our facilities. I do encourage those who would like to have events to consider renting our facilities, particularly our Luria Conference and Press Center. And for extended rental, we offer discounts. As opposed to the city, our dependence on state funding has been very challenging in these last two years because of several new developments that the college has never experienced before. One being that the state, in order to deal with their own cash flow problems, has started a mode of what they call deferred payments. And that's a significant amount of dollars, about $10 million, that we get paid into the next fiscal year. Because of that and other reasons, literally for six out of the 12 months of the '09-'10 fiscal year at SBCC, the total monthly expenditures did exceed the total monthly revenues. And it's our cash reserves that have allowed us to function without a problem. And of course, when a state budget is not passed, starting in '08-'09, we actually experienced what we have never experienced before, which is that we don't get any state payment until the state budget is passed. As Ms. Wright mentioned, these programs, EOPS, Disabled Student Programs and Services, matriculation, serve the neediest of the students. These students would not have an opportunity for higher education if it wasn't for these programs. And these programs were cut almost by half in the last two years. We at the college have made the commitment to offset these cuts almost entirely. So we ended '09-'10 actually in very good shape, and because of very good fiscal management and good planning, although we served a lot more students than we are funded, we were able to finish with $30 million in general fund reserves, which represent about 37% of our unrestricted general fund expenditures. However, for those who are not close to the college, this is the same level of reserves we had 10 years ago. And at that time, that represented 61% of our unrestricted general fund expenditures. So this is a college with a long history, a very strong fiscal management. Therefore, even though the future is bleak, I actually feel confident that we have the ability to withstand these cuts in a way that will ensure the core mission of the college and the strength of the college. And for SBCC, we are looking at, in the best-case scenario, 5.3 million cut to about 12 million cut in our core ongoing, what's called the portion of funding, which will be offset by an increase partially in the student fee. The governor has proposed increasing the fee for our California residents from $26 to $36 per credit. And in addition, more delays in payment are part of the budget for next year. The only bright side is that the categorical programs mentioned before are not cut further. So for us, if the tax extension, extension of tax increases doesn't, does pass, we are looking at a net cut of 3.8, that's about 5.3% of our unrestricted general fund. And in the worst case, at about 10.5, which is 14.4% of our unrestricted general fund. However, because of our solid fiscal base, we will not need to implement these cuts in one year. On the contrary, we are looking at the phased approach. We are very much committed to continuing the innovation partnerships and collaborations that have made Santa Barbara City College the exceptional college that it is. We will seek every dollar that's out there in any grand possible. And we are actually looking at the community, the city, the county as strong partners in what we want to do for the college in the future. This next three to five years are going to be very difficult, but the core of what we do is the success of our students, and we are very much committed to continuing this important mission of the college. And in closing, again, I want to reiterate, we have a number of collaborations with the city. We have training of city employees happening to our professional development center, the joint use agreement, and just personal collaboration, as Jim and I meet frequently and exchange ideas. I feel very positive about our work with the city, and I look forward to continuing collaboration.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? We're a very quiet bunch today, that's okay. Great, thank you, Dr. Servan. Onto the city's financial condition, I believe it's Bob Samario.
Excuse me, give you a minute. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, Mr. President, and members of the board. So I'm going to spend about 10 minutes talking about the city's financial condition. It's also not great, but things are looking a little better for us. First, I wanted to start with a discussion of our general fund. In fact, that'll be the focus. Our general fund is where most of our services are funded, police, fire, libraries, and recreation, and so forth. We do have other operations that are accounted for separately, but really where we see the impacts of the recent economic recession are in the general fund. So where the money comes from, you can see that we have a total budget this year of about $102 million. Of that, most of our money comes from taxes. So very different from the schools, where they rely on the state for funding. We rely really on the economy to fund our services. Taxes include sales taxes, bed taxes, and utility users' taxes, as well as property taxes. taxes. You can see that a very small portion of our revenues come from fees, and so we are limited in what we can do in responding to economic impacts. Obviously, taxes being the biggest portion, it's, you know, in the good times, they grow very strongly, but in the bad times, they grow, they don't grow, they decline heavily like they have in the last couple of years. So it puts a lot of pressure on us, and fees are really not the place we can go to to make up those losses. So you can see where the money goes. Most of our money goes to paying for police and fire, public safety, very typical in any general fund operation across the state and nation. But again, because of that, when we're looking to make cuts, when revenues are down, it's really difficult when public safety represents half of our budget. You can see that the operating departments, which include Parks and Recreation, Community Development, Public Works, and so forth, represent just a third of our budget, and then administration, about 10% of our budget. So the impacts in the recession, I always like to look at this slide, and I know the council members have seen this many, many times, but I think it really indicates and represents what's happened over the last couple of years. This is a chart showing sales tax revenues over the last 14 years, starting in 1997. And you can see we had strong growth from that period on all the way up to 2008 before the recession hit, or when the recession hit. But in just a two-year period, we lost 10 years of growth. And you can see that red line representing where we're at today, which is about where we were in 2000. So 10 years of growth is substantial. And similarly, in our bed tax revenues, we've lost about 5% of growth. It's been growing, or had been growing, in the average of 6%, 7%, 8% per year. And you can see that it's declined the last couple of years dramatically. So this is just quickly, I'm not going into detail, but you can see this is our budget by department, and you can see where some of the big reductions have been over the last few years responding to the revenue shortfalls. You can see double-digit declines in those budgets. And you can see with the smaller declines in our public safety by design, because those are, of course, a priority to the community. And then in terms of positions by department, you can see similarly substantial decreases. Community development, 11 positions down. You can see in libraries, six positions down, about 17.8% of their budget or total positions. Overall, 57 point, almost 58 positions were reduced in the last couple of years. And if you include hourly employees, there's an additional 40 full-time equivalents in the last couple of years that were also reduced or eliminated. This chart shows actually citywide numbers, positions. Back in 1999, we had 1,014 total. That's where we're at as of this current year. You can see that the red bar represents, or the red bar represents the enterprise fund operations. The yellow is our general fund, where most of our positions are. And you can see that's where we've had the biggest decline. In 2007, in the general fund, we had 662 positions, we are now down to 606. The other operations have been pretty stable because they've not been impacted like our general fund by the economic recession. All right, I'll look for the future. We think the worst is behind us, but I got to tell you, there's a lot of uncertainty out there. I hear economic reports in the LA Times, New York Times, and you get one day some good news and then the next day some bad news. And, you know, you know the housing market is still very weak, but for me, the things that we have to kind of pay attention to that's going to drive the economic recovery is unemployment, getting that back down to a reasonable level. In the state, it's about 12.4, nationwide 9%. And, you know, we just had a GDP report of 2.8% the last quarter, and that's not going to get it done. We need sustained growth of somewhere around 5% to 6% of GDP to have an impact on unemployment. And unfortunately, or fortunately, here in Santa Barbara, you know, we, our economy, our local economy is driven by consumer spending nationally, it represents 70% of the economy. So until people get jobs and start spending and start feeling good about themselves and financially, we're not going to really see much of a recovery. So we're expecting a slow economic recovery in the next few years. This year, we're actually seeing some good news. Our bed tax is up by about almost 9% through the middle of the year. But we were building on some bad months in the prior years, so we were expecting some increases. But we are, again, expecting moderate growth over the next few years and hoping that as those gains or those growth rates improve, we'll see our budget start to balance itself. One of the major challenges we're facing in the next few years has to do with our retirement contributions that we make to CalPERS. This is the chart showing the three plans or groups that we fund for police, fire, and everybody else, which we call miscellaneous. The first row shows the current year rates. And so, for example, this year for our police employees, for every dollar of salary, we pay 35 cents to PERS for their retirement. Similarly, for fire, and the miscellaneous lower at 20%. But you can see the growth over the next three years. By 2014, for our police personnel, we'll be paying over 50 cents for every dollar of salary to PERS. Same with fire, and almost 24.3% for miscellaneous. The reason for this dramatic increase is because, you might recall, in 2009, when the recession really hit, CalPERS sustained substantial declines in their assets, almost a 40% decline in just one year. They've had recovery since then, but that one-year impact is going to be spread over this three-year period, starting next year, 2012. And so our rates are going to be going up substantially. In fact, in police, effectively, we're going to see a 49% increase to those rates, with fire 48, and then everybody else about a 20% increase. So this is really our biggest challenge over the next three years. Believe me, I'm not going to go through the detail, this is what I wanted to show you was, this is our multi-year forecast, including this current year, '14. We use this all the time because it helps us to plan and sort of know what the scope of our problem is. But you can see in the second row of numbers, down at the very bottom, you can see next year is what we are seeing as our projected deficit, $2.9 million. A big number, but not as big as what it was last year. We were facing almost a $9 million problem, but it's about $2.93 million out for the few years, or the next few years. Our revenues, we're actually projecting they're going to go from $100.5 to $107 million over a three- or four-year period, which isn't bad. It's about a 2% growth, a little better than that. If we were to grow about 3.5% per year, which is not unreasonable, we would actually grow ourselves out of this problem. But as I said earlier, the economy's uncertain, and we're not, at this point, projecting that kind of growth. Again, our biggest challenge is in salaries and benefits. It's going from $76 million this year to $86 million by 2014. That's a 10% or $10 million increase, about 4.4% annually. You can see the disconnect between our growth and our salaries and benefits relative to our growth and revenues, and that's our biggest challenge. Again, that's primarily or large part driven by PERS rate increases. So our balancing strategy, we're going to try to avoid layoffs next year, and we're going to try to minimize further reductions to service levels, which we, you know, we had some, of course, in the last few years. We're going to hopefully balance through, in part or large part, through concessions with our labor groups. We've already secured three years concessions with police and fire, and we're going to need to do that over the next few years as well. On a long-term basis, our goal is to keep costs down and continue with those labor concessions at a diminishing rate, and hopefully that will allow our revenues to grow back, to grow further into the future, and essentially bring us back into balance by holding down those costs. And for us, we have some potential impacts. I know you folks have a much greater exposure, but with us, there's the proposal to eliminate our redevelopment agency. It's got a lot of press. We, the governor is proposing some states, some cuts in their state library funding. And as you know, they're also proposing to extend the tax increases, which are 1% sales taxes and some continuation of income taxes and the vehicle license fee. And as you know very well, that is what's going to secure continued funding for the schools. Without those extensions, I think they're going to be proposing dramatic reductions in the K-12 education programs. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Villegas.
The potential elimination of the RD8 represents in dollars to the city, how much?
The redevelopment agency is a separate fund and operation, as you know, and we get about $20 million per year through tax increment and property tax revenues. And those monies fund a number of things, but about $8 million goes for debt service and about 20% of the $20 million is for affordable housing, low-income housing, and the rest goes to capital improvements in the project area. If the redevelopment agency were to go away, a portion of those revenues would go to the schools, and a portion would come to our city's general fund. Our estimates for our general fund would be about $1.3 million that we would, will be allocated back to our city's general fund.
Questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So the last item really on this agenda is to open it up to all of us and see what kind of things we'd like to see on future agendas, or obviously if any questions of things that come up so far, we can bring those up as well. But I really open it up to the group of what you'd like to see in the future between, with, you know, talking about different future joint meetings between these two bodies. Elaine? Yes. Ah, there we go. Mr. Villegas, go ahead.
Yeah, first, a statement, I would just really like to commend the city on their leadership on the gang task force, having participated in the last year and in the hiring process of Dr. Frias. I think the action plan is a well-developed action plan that incorporates working with families as a whole and not just the individual gang member, et cetera. So I'd like to commend the city on that. And that's, and I'd like to commend, quite frankly, Dr. Frias, because I know that he has been all around the community. I've met with him personally, and he's starting to look at a lot of programs that are impacting youth and servicing youth, and which is a lot different approach that we've seen in the past in the city, not by the city, but in the city, where outside programs come in with large funding, but don't really take a good analysis of what's out there in the community and what's working. So I commend his efforts during the last three months, and that's one program, to answer your question, Madam Mayor, that I would like to see an update on, you know, how is that program working, how are we moving forward on it, and what are the outcomes?
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Makar?
I have a question also for Dr. Frias. Looking forward to the future, or maybe you could start from right now, what's the lowest age level that you're able to serve and do outreach for, for the kids?
If you can come up to the mic, Dr. Frias.
We look at the family. The families are going to have respective needs, and part of the goal is to really assess who is out there working with the different types of age brackets. As we do that, we're going to build on that existing strength. Part of what we are looking at is particularly family intervention teams that can assist those families that are having some serious challenges. And as we look at each family, each family will be different, but I think that the ages are going to differ. Some ages of the kids are going to be little toddlers, and others are going to be older kids. But ultimately, our goal is to look at the family unit and address the respective needs of that unit. In the near future, we're going to, I guess, hear a lot about approaches, law enforcement approaches, such as injunctions and other related approaches. That approach by itself has limited impact. What we need to do is look at comprehensive approaches that look at the family unit and ultimately address the respective challenges that come with, particularly those high-risk families. So to answer your question, we want to look at the dynamics of the respective family unit and address the needs of children as well as youth.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Livingston.
And I'd just like to explore, and maybe we have, so you can bring me up to date on it, but certainly between Parks and Recs and our non-credit adult education program, whether we can find ways of collaborating with that so we don't overlap on courses or we can supplement each other on that, and primarily in the older adults. So I know some of the Parks and Recs programs are more directed towards the older adults, so that's an area we can take a look at. And then also, Jim Armstrong and I talked about the National Guard property on Yanana, sorry, Cannon Pradito, East Cannon Pradito Street. And that's always out there as a dream collaboration, so I know we all want to stay on the same page with that, whatever evolves out of that.
Nancy Rapp is here, Director of Parks and Rec, and I guess you heard that, I guess, about coordinating courses between City College and the city. So I'm sure that happens during budget process or, but that's a good thing to bring up. Great. Anyway, Trustee Bloom.
Yeah, I think, I think we might want to, at some point, if we're going to have an annual meeting, which I think is a great idea, an annual joint meeting, but we might want to look at the future of continuing education, because there's some huge changes that are being made right now and will be made in the next couple of years. And I think Trustee Livingston just kind of touched on it, but I think we need a report more from City College so that you know what's going on, from what's happening at City College in continuing education, and because those are your people in your neighborhood. And so I think we should have that report, and I think it would be good for everybody to understand what's going on, including me.
Okay. Anyone else? I know President Haslam and I, when we were talking about the agenda, one of the written reports had to do with Santa Barbara City College's internship program and work experience. And if there was more time next time to really look at, can we have a more formal, I guess my question was, how many interns does the city of Santa Barbara utilize through City College, you know, and what is that connection? And can there be a stronger relationship between the two? And might be a nice way to, especially with budget cutbacks and assistance for, who knows what kind of work, there might be an opportunity for other internship possibilities within the city and see if that's something that we could promote a little more, because as the city is a large employer and the City College having a lot of students who are looking for job opportunities into the future, this might be a good opportunity there. And so I appreciate the written report here, but perhaps something a little more, something where we can have a conversation about it would be, would be helpful next time. Anything else?
I was just going to say that I almost brought that up as a question in terms of work experience and collaborations with the internships, but particularly after reading your sustainability report, it just seems like there could be a lot of integration between the school and the Center for Sustainability at City College and the activities you're engaged in.
Great, thank you. Yes?
I think it's, it's true that students learn very well, and perhaps more easily by doing than by listening. I, as a longtime faculty member who did a lot of talking and hoped that the students would be doing a lot of listening, I can, I hesitate to offer that, but it happens to be true. So if we, and to whatever extent we can, engage students in doing meaningful work with the city or with any other internship, I really support that. I think the learning that is taken away by students in doing that is helpful in so many different ways. Most, perhaps most importantly, they get a sense of who they are and how they can contribute to society. And that is, that's a major building block in terms of self-esteem and future citizenship. So I really, I really support that idea. When we, during the report about the city's efforts to deal with juveniles, you know, I was reflecting, I read an article last week, I think, that was talking about the California juvenile justice system, where the estimated cost per juvenile in custody is something akin to $200,000 an individual. And the expenditure is enormous, certainly in comparison to what it costs us to take a student at Santa Barbara City College and give them some basic building blocks with which to become positive, capable, contributing citizens in our society. So I commend the city for doing what it's doing, and if we can do anything that will contribute to that, we would certainly be interested in helping.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. House.
First, I just want to say that everything I've heard so far sounds really great, and the idea that we're, I really appreciated Ms. Wright's report today. I really wasn't aware of that aspect of the work at City College that is so integral and necessary with our other work that Dr. Frias, for instance, is going to be doing, but literally in a very preventative way. And I'll also mention, whatever we can do to be really competent in dealing with those who are re-entering the mainstream, coming back in after having gotten into trouble one way or another, and really, City College has got to be a part of that, and whatever we can do to work together on it. But going to something more mundane and something that Dr. Saban mentioned, and this is work between this meeting and the next one. I know how when we're strapped for cash and everybody's looking for every little penny, how edgy we can get. And my sense is that we should, we need to do something to have some place where we can actually work on some of these rough edges, where there's going to be fees, or there's, you know, our joint use agreements, our, the facilities that we have and the way we use them, and we're all going to be looking for another way to squeeze a nickel or a dime or something out of some other place. But there may also be synergies in there, that if we had a cooperative spirit and kept that going and had a way, maybe a joint committee that works on some of these things, or somehow we encourage, I don't know, I certainly would be willing to participate in something like that, because we could head off some of the little showdowns that, you know, make life miserable, and maybe find some opportunities. We have a lot of amazing facilities between us, and there may be ways for us to make the buck go longer, stretch it, if we could do that. So I'm just encouraging us to find some way to formalize that, maybe between now and the next meeting.
Okay. Miss Bloom? Ms. Bloom?
You just, you just reminded me of the partnership between Harding School and the city, and how much money the city saved Harding School, and UCSB, then, and so on. And it's not just money, but, I mean, you know, we did, we're able to help them a lot with their recycling and so on, and there may be some kind of synergy that we, you know, something that we can work on together, I think, and probably feed off of the expertise of each of us, which is wonderful.
That's what I'm talking about. Just like that.
Yeah. And I also wanted to thank Marcia Wright again. That was a great, great presentation, but, you know, it just shows that when you believe in the youth, you can really make a huge difference, because that's what you're doing, is believing in them and showing them a way to succeed. And what a great thing, and that's what Dr. Freas wants to do. So I really see a close harmony there. It's wonderful. And I can see, in my third-grade class, if you indulge me for 30 seconds, I would have two, two kids, one of them I knew was going to be just fine, and this is at age eight, and one of them I knew was going to just have a terrible time in life. And it had to do with family. It wasn't economics. It was something to do with their family, just, it wasn't clicking, and the other one was going to be fine. So if you can find that mysterious element, we'll have to clone it and sell it to cities all over the world, but, but I think it's great that you're going to be working with families, because that's going to make a huge difference. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, let me just pick up on, just reminded you of something. Dr. Freas, when you came, I serve on the Community Action Commission Board, representing the city, and the selection of you for that position had us have some pretty intense conversations, and at the city as well. And we recognize that just having somebody in that coordinator role, like yours is, by itself wasn't sufficient. It wasn't even sufficient to have the organizations or the jurisdictions working together. It was critical that we reach out and make sure that the foundations and the private sector are also fully participating and engaged. And they're already, they're off and running in their own right, as we all know. It seems to me that as we struggle for finding the funding to meet our missions and to accomplish our goals, both at the City College and the city level, with our Parks and Recreation programs, for instance, that those public-private partnerships and those relationships with the foundations are more important than ever. And I'm thinking that one of our, one of the things that we can do jointly, because we share such a common, you know, sense of mission for the community, is to, is to strengthen those relationships, both with regards to youth at risk, but also with the larger mission that we have in our Parks and Recreation Department, along with our adult education, all of these, there's just such common ground. So I'm, perhaps we can be mindful of that, maybe even talk about that at the next meeting, how we can strengthen those relationships and cause them to see the value of City College and joining together with us.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Livingston.
I'm glad to see that Cliff Drive was included, and certainly anything that we could do, I think, maybe we should propose that whoever is mayor of the city, when Cliff Drive finally gets fixed up, will rename the whole street after whoever gets this job done. Every student who leaves the campus, everybody who works at the campus that has to face that intersection, you put your life in your hands just trying to make a left-hand turn. So happy to see you're working on it. Anything we can do, talk about a collaborative project, we're there for you, and we'll look forward to that.
Do we have a date of when that's coming onto the agenda? It's pretty soon, isn't it? 2/25?
April 12.
April 12. So certainly any information, or please feel free to come to that hearing and express those concerns, that would be great. Anything else? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. We had a full house, and this is being taped, so I'm sure it'll be on city TV at some point soon. And obviously, we know how to get a hold of each other. We don't have to wait till next year to talk to each other, but I think this was a good beginning. So we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.